Well, anybody.
Bill.
Orange here is one of these.
They're my last night.
And your life is one.
Okay, alrighty.
It didn't matter who made it. They could have had.
Called to order the meeting, special city council meeting.
Use your microphone.
April ninth, oh, April ninth, sorry, I know I'm short. Um, April ninth of the city council, um, and we have a quorum. So, our first order of business is a discussion and possible action on a contract with O M M S for a virtual remote inspections, consultations, plan review services, also in person. Uh, they do both. So, um.
Are we ready for a few questions?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed on their information that they missed us as a member already. Are we a member already, under something else?
So, O M M S is what we call an interlocal cooperative, uh, interlocal cooperation act allows two or more public entities to do together what they can do individually. I'll be on, uh, like, O Mag is an interlocal, it's not an insurance company. I, I was a little surprised when I talked with the, their executive director that he said we were already a member. That was news to me. Uh, I don't remember us joining, but they think we joined. Okay, we haven't paid him, we haven't paid him any money.
Okay, that was my next question.
So, that, that, that was a little, little interesting to me, but we, we get the benefit of it. So, if they're wrong, they'll get a bill.
We can join.
Well, they also said, they also listed, they only had two inspectors. And are they going to hire some outside contract help to help out? Two inspectors isn't gonna be able to work off.
I was talking to Steve Whitlock and he said they're working on trying to get more inspectors. Um, some in the metro right now, they're coming out of Tulsa. Um, but I can explain the process. The remote inspections would be done, I could walk around, somebody else could walk around with a cellphone and do a Zoom, showing them what needs to be done.
What they need to see.
Yeah, what they need to see. And, um, then pass or fail. Based on that, um, the in-person inspections are for someone to come here and what I was wanting to do was the ones, that's why I typed up this list, like, when we have one subdivision that has fifty-nine inspections that need to be done, to knock them all out, one after the other, the same day or two days. We would have to pay for their gas and travel time, you know.
I saw seventy-five dollars an hour, what's the, what are the travel expenses?
Gas.
It's, it's actual cost or is it?
Mileage, or mileage.
It's mileage.
When's your time at all for driving from Tulsa to here? Is that where he's coming from?
Right.
So their time starts when they leave wherever.
Right.
So, yes, okay.
How much a mile they are going to charge? How much a mile?
Seventy point one cents or something, I think.
Twenty-one cents a mile plus the, uh, time it takes to get there and back, which is about three hours.
He told me seventy cents a mile. It's the government.
Yeah, it's the IRS standard.
Yeah, yeah, government standard. So, um, that, and, uh, so I typed up the list of the ones that we need right now. We have like, it's about fifty-nine just in Cherokee Crossing with Tabor Homes. And then I didn't even have time to type up the rest of them. Um, and I wanted to show you guys with, a building inspector has to have licenses in, it's actually eight testing areas because you have to do a commercial and a residential. You have to do it in plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and building. And, so I brought some show and tell material. Right now, we're on the twenty-fifteen international residential code. This is just for the residential test. This is how much you have to know. This is, we're on the twenty-eighteen for the commercial. This is how much you have to know, just for that test. The state of Oklahoma is gonna be moving the I R, every test to the twenty-twenty-four addition of the I R C, which is the international residential code. This is the new one. That's just for the residential building inspector task.
But it doesn't affect us until we adopt it. And we're not gonna be adopting all of the new standards when they first come out.
No.
Because we don't want that.
And, and they put it off this year, they were gonna vote this year and they put it off, somebody forgot to send it.
That's why we're in the fifteens and eighteens.
Right.
Because you want time to.
Right.
Absorb that, the changes.
But I was just showing you an example, my, uh, son, let me borrow that, because he has to use that, so, or he's gonna use that, so. But that's, that's how hard this is to get someone who can do all four areas in both categories.
Do we have any idea how many inspectors there are at Oklahoma, since it's a pretty thick?
That can do that?
Yeah. For the low number?
I know Owasso has one, Bethany has one, and I've talked to Elizabeth to see if we could borrow hers. And she said, he's really busy, but she might be able to let us borrow him too. And I don't think that this contract with O M M S is exclusive.
The other thing is, how long is the contract for, or does it have a length?
It's, it's a fee for service.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a fee for service, so if we don't have any inspections, we don't have.
Okay. Is there any plan on finding someone on a permanent basis, or?
We don't know yet.
That, that's a discussion for another day.
Because you have to be licensed in all four categories, in, in commercial and residential.
And residential.
That's why I'm saying, I know Owasso, I think Owasso has one, Bethany has one, I don't know.
Most, most cities.
Chalkdale has one.
Most cities do. Essentially, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have building code, you, in order to enforce it, you need to have an inspector.
Most.
There's a lot of cities that have people who are the inspector, code enforcer, police chief. I've seen that in some small, yeah, and Mike's over there shaking his head now.
Small community, we, we might as well change it from building inspector to unicorn, because that's how rare they are.
Yeah.
Like.
I think Mike can do it.
They're, they're, to be, to be fair, they're not rare. I mean, Tulsa and Oklahoma City have an whole inspection departments with multiple.
They have individual inspectors for each one, and like Edmund does too.
I, I would venture a bet that all the cities, and, you know, not necessarily the towns, but the cities are gonna have somebody on staff who's the inspector, whether it's a full-time position.
Yeah.
But they're gonna have somebody that's the inspector, because if you don't have one, you can't enforce building codes.
Are you still the, uh, attorney for the village?
Uh, the prosecutor.
Okay, okay, as prosecutor, real, okay.
And they have building inspector, I actually met with them on Tuesday morning.
Okay.
Um, about some code compliance issues. So.
Does their building inspector do all four categories? Okay, so there's another city that we could, might maybe borrow as well.
A, a, a lot of it, when, when the mayor and I were chatting about this problem and it confronted us here about a week ago, was, we, you know, reach out to O M M S, because I knew that they had the circuit rider program. We can reach out to the neighboring cities, the problem there is that they've, they've got people that, if they have free time, they could potentially loan up to us, but they're not going to prioritize us over the inspection things they do in their own community. There are some cities that have, for code enforcement and inspection purposes, partnered with a town to where the town pays them some money and once a month, once, you know, twice a month, they'll send their person to the town to be their inspector code enforcer. That gives them a little supplemental income that then allows them to be able to justify having the staff that they do. Uh, we're not at a place where, I mean, maybe long-term, there could be a discussion between the, like, cities of Bethany and War Acres about is there some benefit to looking at having some sort of a partnership to where we could go in on a common person?
Okay.
Right now, we're looking for short-term solutions.
Yeah.
And that's why it would be, because we really don't have enough for, put someone up full-time for that.
Well, and, and we have a full-time employee, they're not available right now, so.
Okay.
I also checked with companies that had building inspectors too, and I was not able to find any that were local.
Okay.
There were some in Kansas, some in Tulsa, but none in the metro, so.
How, how fast are they available to come help us?
Uh, Steve, the, the guy I talked to, Steve Whitlock, he said if we approve this tonight, then we could possibly have someone here by Friday.
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
Um, and I, yeah. So I've got everything lined up now as far as what needs to be done at each house, so that he could knock out a house, go to the next house, knock out a house.
And, and to be fair on this, and I, I think it would be beneficial to council mayor, how long have those applications been pending?
Um, the earliest one was March, uh, looks like twenty-eighth.
So we're, we're talking about that list that you've got are just the requests for inspections that have been coming in the la, within less than the last two, less than the last.
Include that stack.
That doesn't include this stack, yeah, they're, uh, I think.
Right, I, I just didn't want the council to get the impression that these have been pending for a long time. These are just, what has come in in less than the last two weeks.
March twenty, March seventeenth, here's one, from March seventeenth, just one, and then March twenty-eighth, and then most of them are March thirty-first and on.
Are we planning to have an inspector in the house that have, that covers the whole?
We, we current, we currently have a full-time inspector, but he's not available to perform the inspections right now.
We don't know what we're gonna do in the future, yet. This is just to, short-term.
This is a fix for short-term.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question, this might be something that goes on a council agenda, like, not for this meeting, but do we have to look at what we're charging as far as rates for these things? Like, is that gonna be affected because of what we're gonna do with this, or?
Judy was working on that for, when it, for permits and, uh.
No, I'm, I'm working on, um, the sewer one.
Oh, okay.
To incorporate that into a, an ordinance to recoup.
Administration fee.
Yes. Oh, okay.
What we're paying out for lawyers and that, so not this.
Not the building, okay.
But, yeah.
But, yeah, we.
I don't have a problem with what he's saying, I think we should recoup.
Yeah.
To, to answer your question, Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I can't tell you this definitively, but I can tell you with about ninety percent confidence that the fee that we're charging now hasn't been enough to recoup the costs that we have.
Right.
How, how much do they charge?
Ever.
Ever.
Not even the fifties when they assisted.
Right.
But I don't know, they're all like a hundred twenty-five for.
That's it?
There, there are different things for different permits.
Yeah, and I've got the list in the office, but I didn't, I didn't have a chance to type it up yet.
Pam can, can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I don't recall, I mean, I've been city attorney for, this will be year sixteen, and I don't think in that sixteen-year updated our fees for these kinds of.
Mark and Dakota told me.
There was work done on that?
Yeah.
With Mark and them, and they gave us a sheet, but I'm not sure that it ever.
Yeah, we just got, I think, the town nineteen.
They wanted to implement was not right.
Yeah, Dakota.
We could just get a thousand dollars for a.
Yeah.
See what they're charging.
There's actually some other things that I'd like for you guys to put feet, we, we need to have an, a alarm permit. We give them the paperwork, it gets filed with the police department, they have everybody's alarms, they're supposed to file their alarm with it, but we don't charge a fee. We should be. Every other city charges an alarm fee. And then there's some other stuff that we've been looking at that I was gonna bring up in the next couple of meetings.
So, should that just be an agenda item for future meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, Dakota said that.
I'll, I'll, I'll get with you.
That she had, uh, her and Mark had done this two years ago, um, and, but we never received it, I guess, but I wanted to do a comparative study on comparable towns of the same size, you know, not, not giant towns, but, you know, towns that are basically our size, to see what they charge for each permit, and I, I.
Permit for air condition, I paid two hundred seventy dollars just for the permit.
For what?
For a permit to change an air condition system in Michigan.
Oh.
Hundred seventy dollars.
Yikes, yeah.
Then small city, it's not that big of a city.
It is summer, you know.
Here, in the city?
No, 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 in Michigan, oh.
Yeah.
It's gotta be different.
But, um.
And that was a year ago.
So, these are things we're working on, um.
Well, I gotta say, I'm not a fan of the remote inspection. I don't, having been through several inspections, I just don't see how you can do it remote and assume that they're gonna point the camera at the right thing, and you're gonna see it from a distance, depending on the size of screen you're looking at. But onsite inspection, I don't have any problem with the company doing it in person, but I'm just, I don't mind plan review on a remote offsite, but for the actual inspection onsite, I, I'm not a fan of that.
Can I add something to that? What if it was just a short-term time period that we did the remotes and maybe possibly only on the new stuff? I mean, can we have some kind of disclaimer like that? To get, um, expedited?
Have a liability. And who's accepting the liability for doing this?
Is the licensed person accepting the liability?
Well, the company would be.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is, because, because the inspector is, he's gotta be licensed and certified, it would be on that guy's certification.
Except they're gonna say the person holding the phone didn't show the right point, and I didn't see.
Well, you know, that's, hey, I'm a licensed surveyor, if somebody, if I sign off on something and I wasn't there and I did some, you know, because my field guy didn't give everything right, well, I'm the guy who's liable.
Yeah.
I will go ahead. I'll interject here, um, whether it falls on us or O M M S is legally irrelevant, because we're both subject to the tort claims act, and the tort claims act provides for sovereign immunity for any liability claim that is based upon inspections. So, whether the tort claim was filed with us or with O M M S, because O M M S is an interlocal, it's a public entity, we're both subject to the tort claims act, so, eh, that is not to say that, eh, we can just go.
Yeah.
Half you-know-what these things, I mean, we wanna get them right.
Yeah.
But we, we, we had an issue here in War Acres many, many years ago under a prior inspector where we approved a footing and then had to go have them tear it out, because it was done incorrectly. We approved it and then took back the approval, and they wanted to file a claim with us and then found out they wouldn't be able to recover money.
I tell you, these contractors are not very happy right now.
Yeah.
They call it, they kill it the people that live in the town.
Well, it affects, it affects our credibility, it affects our, you know.
Integrity.
Credibility here as a city. That's what they're looking at, you know, it makes people think if they wanna build here, if we're not.
Yeah.
To your point, John, I, I totally agree with you, however, I feel like we're gonna pinch and we need to get ahead of the ballgame.
At least a Band-Aid, right? That's pretty much what we're talking about. A Band-Aid, pretty much.
Because there's a lot of new filing up stuff.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't have to request a remote, uh, it's just option.
Part, part of the reason, talking with Steve, and I've known Steve for a long time, which is why it's easy to just call him when this issue arose, part of the reason that they offer the remote is because they are an interlocal and they exist to meet the needs of their interlocal municipalities, and for some of them, like small towns, for cost savings purposes, I mean, if you're a small town in southeastern Oklahoma who doesn't have a full-time inspector, paying them to come down to southeast Oklahoma as opposed to paying them to, and having a town employee go out with the, with the phone, is it ideal? No. But he's trying to meet the needs of the community and meet them where they're at, and so they'd rather have a remote inspection than have no inspection whatsoever.
Yeah.
So that's part of why they, they offer that service, is to try and meet the needs of the communities they serve.
And, and maybe just use them for the little things like fences.
Yeah.
You know, not, not the big things.
Like electrical, maybe you wouldn't wanna do it for electrical.
Electrical, mechanical, plumbing.
Is there a timeframe you want this contract?
Actually plumbing, I had.
It would, it would be a fee for service and.
Plumbing remote.
What, what I would recommend.
It's new.
It's just me talking. Uh, what I would recommend is that we maintain the contract with them, it's fee for service, so if we don't use them, we, we don't pay them. But even, you know, we, if we get back up, up on our feet doing the inspections internally, it's nice to have a contract like this in place in case we get an overload, and, and that's part of what Steve told me, they, you know, some of the cities that they work for, it's overload. The, the inspector wants to take a two-week vacation and a bunch of applications come in, they don't have to have them canceled as a vacation, they get a whole bunch that he can't get done as quickly as he wants, so, but, that's part of why they have this program, is to just sort of, as you need it, they're available. So you've got something in place, you know, break glass in case of emergency.
Right.
But we don't, we could keep this contract.
A backup plan.
We could keep this contract in place for the next twenty years and only use it in the next two months. But have it available just in case.
Well, I just didn't know what the long-term bill is, are we gonna hire an inspector, is, are we gonna go with this?
We've got a full-time inspector right now, and so, um.
But I'm saying, so we're just using this as backup?
We're, we're using this because we currently don't have a person who is available to perform the inspections. To, to perform them at this time.
Yeah.
She just asked about.
Yeah, I was.
If we could do something else.
You know, is to borrow another inspector, do we have to add that to next week's agenda?
Yeah.
To, because we didn't put that in the.
Yeah, I mean, right now, all you're being asked for is to approve a contract with O M M S for contract inspection services. We can include something on the next agenda for next week, depend, and whether or not we get to it is, just depending on whether we've got something ready by then to look at being able to also contract with other cities.
Can we call the vote on this already?
If we can't do anything until, I, I mean, I know this, but can, can she not have Bethany? Since her and Elizabeth already talked, and Bethany has already said we would be willing to, because these people have already waited all this time, and every time they get a phone call, they're like, what do we say? And I'm like, the inspector's not here. And so every single time, and some of these people are getting very aggravated with John or Crystal or Lilia, whoever's answering the phone, and then we're passing them on to Vicky, because it's like, we don't know what to tell anybody anymore, because they're needing to continue working, and they're stuck, they can't go one more step until they get that inspection on that part before they can do the next thing.
I know where an inspector is available part-time, but again, it's the, it's the liability side of it for them, so they either have to contract through a third party, or they have to be a part-time employee so that they're exempt. Those are the only two ways that they can actually do the work.
Authorized provider is what they call, see, uh, the, see, uh, construction industry board calls it.
Well, what John's talking about is if there was an individual out there who had the licenses who would be willing to help.
Gonna do it on the.
The problem with doing it as a contractor is they would take on the liability as opposed to if they were an employee.
Nobody wants to do that. They don't wanna charge you enough for them to go get all the insurance to do that on a part-time basis.
I mean, how do these people, are these full-time employees for them, or they just work on a as-needed basis per hour or something?
They listed two that were employees of the company.
Like, higher on with that?
Well, he, he has worked with other companies, he just wasn't familiar with that one. That's the only one we're approving.
Isn't this fairly new?
For approving.
Uh, so, O M, O M M S, they, they have people that work for them that, I mean, it's essentially a pay-as-you-go. Uh, and so, one of, one of the things that they do is they place interim city managers, so they've got people who are employees who may not get paid one month because there just wasn't a work form, but when they can place them, then, then they're actually actively getting paid. The folks that they've got working doing the inspections, that's how it is. They've luckily got enough work that they're getting paid for the work that they do. If none of their communities need any of the inspections done that month, then their people just don't get paid.
Right.
Well, I say that, Steve, I wanna say he gives people a guaranteed retainer for the month, you know, they'll pay you at least this much just to have you available, uh, but with the inspectors, he hasn't had to worry about that. The city managers, he's had to pay a little bit a month just to keep them available.
The reason you can't hardly find a, an inspector is because it requires all that bookwork and research, and they don't get paid that much.
Unicorns.
They're not attracting new people into the field.
Yeah.
That's the key.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's a lot to learn.
It is a lot to learn. It's a lot of tests to take.
Yeah.
It's hard work, and it doesn't pay that well, so.
And I, I, I'm sad that Oklahoma didn't think about that for small towns, you know.
Right.
Well, and to be clear, the, you don't have to have a license if you're in a municipality that's less than ten thousand population.
Okay.
Yeah, we just barely crossed that.
We're right there.
Back in twenty-ten.
Can we, uh, vote on this?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract with O M M S.
I second it.
Good job, Debbie.
Myers?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Amosui?
Yes.
Worley?
Yay.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I have some prayers?
Thank y'all, that's gonna help. Okay, our next item, it says discussion and possible action. To appoint the mayor is a code-enforcing officer until someone is hired, there does not need to be an action.
The, the council wouldn't be taking any action, uh, because you don't appoint people.
It's just a discussion.
It's a discussion, because the charter does say that the mayor can, uh, appoint themselves to other positions within the city government as long as they don't receive any extra compensation, uh, for holding that position.
Until we can get a new code enforcement person.
Vicky, just do it. That's what it boils down to, right?
So, I guess my question, my question is, have we advertised to try to get a new code enforcer? I haven't seen anything that says like, we're trying to hire, like, you know, the police show thing.
You want to tell them that, John? We, we have some, internally, someone.
We have an issue, because I can't hire somebody for the front until he's no longer at the front, so, which means we would have to move him if he, if, if that's what Vicky decides she wants to do. John is interested in becoming code enforcement.
And we're both taking the, we're both taking.
Works licensing and permits right now.
We're both taking the class in August, and, and then the test, so.
Somebody told me how to finagle around that, so that I can get somebody that can work the front. At the same time, I'm, he's moving.
Don't they have temporary workers for the clerical part?
Well, I can't hire temporary workers to handle the city money.
And they have to take a class.
Because you can't bond them.
Too.
Okay.
Not, not real good to hire somebody that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Off the street. Yeah. So, anyways, we're, we're, like I said, we're both taking the class in August, and, uh, so if John passes, maybe we could split his time too.
The only thing I can think is if, if that's what you're gonna do, is go ahead and move him, but he's gonna have to keep helping at the front, because we're gonna have to advertise.
Oh, code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
Can the city attorney be a code enforcer?
That would be a no.
I just wanted to see his face.
Lost your mind?
Put it on mic again.
Hey, I, I, I'm not kidding, there, when you get to smaller communities, it's actually code that usually falls to the P D first before inspections, um, which becomes actually a huge problem, because code is more of a civilian position and you got uniformed cops out doing civilian work, and citizens think they're dealing with a uniformed cop, which, when they tell you to do something, you have to do it, code tells you to do something, you'll have to do it. And we all know what happens when you don't do something that a cop tells you to do, they generally don't take kindly to that. So, had quite a few claims at O Mag of false arrest of a, by a police officer who was doing code duties, um, which, never a good look. I will say, the one distinction between code and inspector that is important here is, code gets a twelve-month grace period to get, uh, the certification training, whereas inspectors, you have to have a license, there's a way to get a temporary license, but you, you can't do it until you have a license, whereas with code, you can. You've got up to twelve months, uh, to get the certification. So we could, we can have somebody do it on a temporary basis as long as it doesn't exceed twelve months.
Well, I mean, this is what I wanna, if I can ask this, I was gonna ask Pam something, can I ask Pam something?
Sure you can.
Well, no, I didn't, I didn't know.
Are you gonna ask her to do code?
No, no, not to do code, I was gonna ask her which she would prefer, like, huh? Because my, my concern is the summer when everybody's, nobody cuts their grass and nobody does their trash, and then they're gonna be more busy than if it was in the winter, when people just don't take their trash out. I don't, because that would sway our votes, like, if, if you need John at the front and he, that's the only place he can be, then he can't leave, so it would have to be the mayor, if, if you think you, he can do both, because it might help him with his tests, I, you know, I don't know. That's why I thought I'd ask you.
No, I can't hire anybody until I have a position open. I can't advertise until I have a position open, because I have a situation with an employee who is not here right now, but I cannot do anything until that position becomes unfilled. So we're already running one person short.
Yeah.
But if you were to move, but if you were to, if the mayor were to point, that's my ques, like, if the mayor were to point John now, then that position would be open and then you could hire a person for the front.
Right.
But which would you prefer? To leave it? I mean, that's why I'm asking, I, I don't know how you guys wanna run the, that, the staffing.
I mean, there's only one option, and that is to, if that's what he wants to do, is that he moves to that position and leaves the other one vacant.
Because right now, you can't do anything.
He's willing to, even if he moves, he's willing to still help us out, but if he gets really busy, he's not gonna be able to help us out.
I'm just saying, moving, how far away?
Well, what she's saying is.
Do a different job.
From public work, she, he, right now, he's in the city clerk's department. He would move to Mike Turman's public works.
Got you, okay.
He's in the city clerk's, he moved to public works department.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Which is why we lost our code enforcement. Yeah, which is why we lost our code enforcement.
He could be, his desk could be up at the front desk, but your code enforcer can work, I mean, they're going to work on paperwork here, but it's hard to spot the high grass from the, from up there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, our code enforcement moved to payroll, and so that's why we don't have one. And so they switched departments.
But we'll let him, we'll move him to code enforcement, and then you can come out front and do licensing and permits.
Okay, all right.
It's like, if I...
I don't have any.
Learn all the different areas in the city.
Well, so that's what I'm saying. So let's say we move John, or the mayor moves, actually, to be a mayor move doing this?
Well, maybe be a discussion between her and Mike Cherman, who is the department head for Public Works.
And this falls under Public Works.
Right, and so I'm saying, it kind of seems like you would rather John, if he wants to go, just do it now, so you can fill that position. Because right now, you can't fill it if he's doing, if he wants to do code enforcement, but he's still up front, he's not going to be doing.
Well, my concern is, just like you said, it's going to start raining, the grass is going to start growing, you need a code enforcement officer.
The grass is growing like crazy. You should see half of my backyard.
I've already been posting violations, so, uh, Cheryl's telling me what, what to do and how to do it, so, uh...
Well, my concern would be for John, if he moved over now and say he didn't pa... God forbid, he doesn't pass the test. He's then out of a job, right?
Not if he's still got Public Works as the backup.
And he has a year to take.
The apartment he was moving to is not code enforcement. I don't know what it is, but it's not code enforcement.
I don't think he'd have any trouble passing the test.
From what Matt was saying earlier, does the council need to make any kind of deal? Because it's, uh, in the, uh, char... I mean, the ordinance is already, or charter?
Let, let me put it to you this way. Does anybody have reservations about the plan?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, it, it got added there a little bit as a, is, before you just find out that this happened, are there any reservations?
It sounds like you've already talked out a lot of the details and whatevs and stuff, so.
I just, I just think my concern is, the mayor position already doesn't pay anything. And then you're going to make the person that gets paid the least out here have to do, run the city as the mayor, and then be code enforcer.
But it's temporary, right, Vicky?
I, I don't think it should be done this way. I don't think it should be done this way. I, I, I have reservations against that. I don't think this is a good idea. Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, it's not a vote.
I know. We were asked if there is a reservation, and I answered.
Sure.
My, my concern is, it's not going to be long-term, right?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
If it was like a year, then I would be worried.
That's good.
Motion to adjourn. Go for it.
Second. He's got to go fight.
I'm ready. What time is it?
Thirty-five.
All right, I've got plenty of time.
Yeah, time.
So do you withdraw your second, or?
Do it.
Yeah, you want to stay and talk some more? We can stay and talk some more. He's good.
I'll see you guys next week.
Right. Right.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Do we have a second, because I just?
A second?
Yes, kid did, yeah.
Okay, I thought he made the motion. Who's?
Judy was.
Made the motion.
Oh, Judy made the motion. Sorry.
They, they said it at the same time, and they didn't do jinx, so.[1784.87]